...the first high school building committee meeting on September 14th, 2023. The public can also access this meeting via WebEx technology. The meeting of the Burlington High School Burlington Committee will be held in person at the location provided on this notice, which is this room. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. If you are participating remotely, please identify yourself by typing your name on the screen in advance and verbally, once you're identified, to speak. We request that you please turn on your camera, and comments and statements are limited to three minutes. You can access this meeting with the meeting number of (2343) 253-1139, and the password is Burlington. So I'd like to start off with some introductions. Well, oh, yes, Pledge of Allegiance, yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
She didn't put it on there. Okay, now we'll do introductions. So I am Catherine Bond, and I was voted in as the Chair of this committee. We have Martha Simon, who is Vice Chair, and we have Jeremy Brooks, present, who is a school committee member. We have Chris Monaco, school committee member, and those are the school committee members. But if everyone would like to go through and introduce themselves from that point forward, I just wanted to grab the people that were right next to me and who are members of the school committee.
Melissa's online.
Oh, I don't see Melissa. She's, okay, Melissa Massardo, school committee member, who's online. And then if everyone else can go down and introduce yourselves and what your role is, background, whether you're a parent, or teacher, or maintenance, that'd be great. And we'll start, what? Yes, Wendy.
I'm Wendy Chowinski. I'm a parent, and I also teach chemistry at the high school.
Okay, and we'll start with you, Chris.
I'm Chris Campbell. I am a resident, parent of two future Burlington Public School students, member of Town Meeting, Ways and Means member, and I am a specialized administrator at a local public high school.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Chen. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Learning for Burlington Public Schools.
Nicole Koshia, School Business Manager.
I'm Doug Davison. I'm a Town Meeting Member and Ways and Means.
And I'm Gail Pinkham, and I'm a parent here, and I have three kids in the school system, or two that are in college now, and one that is almost done and senior this year.
We'll go with Mr. Kuna.
Bob Kuna, Director of Operations, School Department.
We'll go with Neil.
I'm Neil Guancey, the Maintenance Manager for the Burlington School Department and a parent of two students in town.
Excellent.
Eric Conti, Superintendent.
Okay, we're going to go online, and we'll start off with Mr. Sullivan.
Hello, everybody. Mark Sullivan, Burlington High School Principal.
Okay, and then we'll go down to Mr. Adabato.
Hi, everyone. My name's Joe Adabato. I'm the Director of Counseling at Burlington High School.
Okay, and I think we have Laura.
Hi, I'm Laura Maida. I'm one of the special education teachers at the high school.
And then we have Tom.
Hello, I'm Tom Regan. I'm a math teacher at the high school.
Yep, and I think we already did Melissa, and is Mimi? Is she on?
Yeah.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
A little faint.
Yeah.
A little faint?
Yeah.
Can you hear me better?
Yes.
Yep.
Is that, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Mimi Bix Island. I am an LICSW in private practice and a group practice. I provide culturally-affirming psychotherapy to marginalized people and consultation services in the areas of educational anti-racism and anti-bias. In my young adulthood, I was a teacher, and later in life, a school social worker. Like so many in this school district, I have multiple roles, including Town Meeting Member and a parent. Lastly, I am a naturalist who promotes sustainable consumer practices. I look forward to productive and open-minded dialogues with this committee. Thank you.
And Mary Ann?
Mary Ann's having a little bit of difficulties with technology.
Okay, so, anyway.
Yeah. I'm here.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes?
Yes.
School Committee Secretary, recording the minute for this meeting as well.
Okay, and Esther?
Hi, I'm Esther. I'm a senior at Burlington High, and I'm also NHF President.
Excellent. And did I miss anybody? Because I apologize if I did. Did I catch everyone online?
I think so.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. I don't think so. Okay. So the first order of business is that we are going to vote to replace John Eiler with Doug Davison for Ways and Means. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of the voting members? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, and... Oh, I have to do roll call, sorry. Yep, sorry about that. I forgot Melissa was online tonight. Melissa Massardo?
Aye.
Yep. Chris Monaco?
Aye.
Jeremy Brooks?
Aye.
Martha Simon? Aye. Dr. Conti?
Aye, yes.
Dr. Chen?
Aye.
And the Chair is an aye, so we are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 0, 0. All right. And the next vote will be to add Mimi. And we're going to, Mimi Bix Island? All right, second? This is a second? Okay. And any discussion? Okay, I'm going to take a roll call again. Melissa Massardo?
Aye.
Chris Monaco?
Aye.
Jeremy Brooks?
Aye.
Martha Simon? Yes. Dr. Conti?
Yeah.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes, so it's 7, 0, 0. All right. Okay, the next item is public comments. And is there anybody online? I don't see anyone in person. Is there anyone online who would like to make a comment? All right. That was easy. So the next item up for discussion is the OPM RFS, and that's the, we're going to review and approve it. And I would like to go ahead and let Nicole, since you were so kind to put this together and get it out, I think hopefully everyone had a chance to review it for this evening. So anything you would like to inform us about, or let us know about, that'd be great.
Sure. So... Can you speak into the mic? Yep. So the draft that was sent out, we used the MSBA format, even though at this time, we're not moving forward with MSBA. So pretty much the first pages, 1 through 10, are the RFP document and everything else is the attachments, like our statement of interest and everything else. So on the first 10 pages, I've highlighted sort of the areas that we updated to pertain to VHS. And so I guess if anyone had any comments, or anything that they felt that needed to be, that wasn't already addressed there, that needed to be added. And then we also have on page 7, some dates of like when our, we're going to start advertising. So in order to get this into the central register, I have to submit it on Thursdays by 4:00 p.m. for the following Wednesdays. So the soonest that we could get this published would be the September 27th. And then there's just additional dates for when they're due back, when would have our, this election committee that would establish this evening, review and submit back to me to tally in order to shortlist, who would then move forward to interview. So I think just those dates, something to keep in mind for who, when we're forming this election committee tonight, to make sure that those people would be able to review responses the week of October 16th. That's...
You're saying, when would we get the responses? We'd have to be reading it the week before, or are we...
So the responses would be due back by respondents, October 16th. And then every, anyone that's on the selection committee would need to be able to review that week to get them back to me, so that we could shortlist by October 23rd.
All right, thank you. Ms. Simon, I know you had mentioned you had some questions, and then I'll get to you, Jeremy.
Okay. So, thank you again, Nicole, this, you know, this was a lot of work. And I know you had some templates to work with, but thank you. I know it was a big project, especially with the beginning of the school year. I wanted to address a couple of the evaluation criteria about perhaps adding things. So in the evaluation criteria number, on page 4, it says, in that introduction, it says that demonstrate that they have significant experience, knowledge, and abilities with respect to public construction projects, particularly involving the construction and renovation of K-12 schools in Massachusetts. I'd like to suggest that we say, and especially 9 to 12, because we're looking for someone, perhaps, who has had experience with a high school. So I'd like to be particular. I don't necessarily, I could go either way, taking out the K-12, or leaving it in and adding the 9 to 12. But I'd like to have that, so I'd like to put that out as something for people to consider.
Yeah, just the only other question I have is page 5, evaluation criteria 7. I just want to ensure, what we're asking there, is it just the workload they have currently, or the projects they have that are of comparative value? Because, you know, we note the value of the project for 100 million to 350 million. We're asking for workload over 1.5 million. So is it just work they have, or comparative projects? I just want to ensure what we're asking.
I think comparative projects.
Okay, so I would suggest then we put the threshold to like maybe 80 or 100 million dollars instead of 1.5 million, if we're saying it's of comparable value for those projects?
Anybody have a comment on that, or a concern about that? Ms. Monaco?
I would think that instead of lowering the number, you'd raise the number. Like, what you want to do is compare the work that these people have done in other communities. So you don't want to compare with a smaller, less expensive school. You want to compare with a large high school.
That's what I'm talking about. So instead of 1.5 million, I'd like to raise the value to 100 million or above for criteria 7.
Yeah, maybe 300 million.
Yeah, I mean, whatever, just 1.5 seems a little low.
But I think we should ask Nicole for her advice.
Nicole? I am not in disagreement of that. I kind of agree with, maybe we should increase that number, too. But I, you know, do you know what we're talking about, or is there something we're misunderstanding? Dr. Conti?
No, I do. I think that the numbers that you were talking about are for the actual construction project. I think this number, we have 1.5 million that's been allocated by Town Meeting. This is for just the owner's project manager and the feasibility study, so we really need it to fit underneath the 1.5 million dollars. And Nicole's going to identify a firm and then negotiate with them. So I think that's why the 1.5 million dollars is there. They might define a 300 million dollar project for us, but I don't want their feasibility to cost, I only want it to fit within the 1.5 that we have.
That makes total sense. Ms. Monaco?
Yeah, I think we need to just read it again and make sure what it says, because if we're looking for their experience, so that we can judge their experience, that's one thing. And if it's what Eric said, then that's a totally different thing. So we need to be clear.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Anyone online? Everybody good? Any hands up? Okay.
So, the question is, is this referencing their work as project managers? Or is this referencing, if it is referencing their work, and which is as a project manager, then I think the 1.5 million is the right number. And I just want to ask Nicole again, I mean, you wrote it, so probably you think it's right, but just, is that, we got confused, thinking it was about the cost of the full construction.
Yeah, so I think we leave it at the 1.5. I just pulled up another community that did a project of a similar size in their RFS. They left it at the 1.5.
Okay. Okay, so we're all, we all comfortable with that?
Madam Chair, in the introduction, Nicole does point out that the final project may range from 100 to 350 million dollars. So we want, we're trying to get the scope of the project, at least the full project out there, so they're comfortable with that. And just because we've done this a lot, I think sometimes we jump in, like everyone, OPM is owner's project manager. This is a firm that actually works for us. And it, at future meetings, once we have an owner's project manager firm, they will take over a lot of the logistics of these meetings. They will create a website. They basically work for us to see the project through. So that's what we're doing. Nicole is obviously a business manager of the district, but she's also certified by the state as a procurement officer. So because this is such an expensive contract, that we're following a process, which is why we have to go out to bid in the first place. We just can't pick Bob's cousin, who we know can do this job and do a good job. So there's rules we have to follow through procurement. The good part about this and not working with the Massachusetts School Building Authority, which we are on the Fox Hill side, is that typically, once we approved this RFP, it would need to go before the MSBA board, because they're a financial partner, and they would need to approve the document as well. So it's not just this board that approves. We don't have to do that, because this is a locally funded project at this time. So, but we are still trying to follow the MSBA process, because our hope is, at some point, we will get brought into their, under their umbrella. And then if we had followed their process, then it would be easier for us to make that transition moving in. So if some of this seems very formal and scripted, it's because we're trying to follow a process. But we can get through the process more quickly, because we don't have to wait for the School Building Authority Board to vote on our work. We can just do our work. So we have a lot more latitude, Madam Chair, as you know. And so that's, that's kind of where we are. So I would spend some time, even if you want to take a few minutes, looking at the project description, number 3. Really want to make sure that some of what you want this person to look at is being covered. And then, and again, I think Nicole went over the dates, so we'd really like to have this firm onboard sometime in November. And then a lot of the other language is procurement language that Nicole has to put in to make sure that we are doing this legally.
Thank you, Dr. Conti.
And so I'd like to go back to my suggestion. So I'd like to propose that we change, that it's on page 4, under evaluation criteria, that we say particularly involving the construction and renovation of grade 9 to 12 schools in Massachusetts. And I'm, you know, proposing that as a change.
Speaking of building construction and renovation of...
Okay. We need a moment.
He's thinking about it. He's thinking about it.
I'm going to get rid of that.
Well, I, yeah, yeah, I do. So if our people are in agreement, and I can move forward, I can ask my other question.
Yes.
Is there anyone who thinks it's a problem?
Anyone else who thinks it's a problem?
Chris is kind of...
Yes, Chris?
It's not necessarily a problem, but they're, looking online, when looking at some of these firms, a lot of them also have done junior, senior high schools as well. So I just don't want to limit smaller projects, just because we say 9 through 12, because some of them have done bigger schools, but they've gone to combine junior, senior project.
What about saying like 7 to 12?
Or 6 through...
6 through 12.
What about 6 through 12? Does that work?
People come, I'd be comfortable with that, yeah.
Ms. Monica?
Wouldn't it make sense to see what we get and maybe choose based on that? You know, like if someone has a lot of experience in that level and gets really strong recommendations, it doesn't really matter to me. I'm just trying not to blow up the document.
It's actually not...
Hold on. Oh, I'm sorry. Martha, go ahead.
It's not listed as one of the criteria. That's why I thought it would be important to identify for companies, you know, and it would be, you know...
I'm going to say, I mean, I don't disagree with what you're trying to accomplish. I know where you're coming from, but then I wonder if we're going to limit the pool of qualified, who may have done some very good high school projects. And, I mean, even though they fall into that criteria, they might feel like they don't want to respond because of that. I don't know. I don't want people to feel like they can't respond. Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, so just, geez, page number is that, page 5, under 11 paragraph, the second paragraph under 11, owner reserves the right to consider any other relevant criteria that may deem appropriate within the sole discretion. When it's in sole discretion, that gives us a latitude to down-select to that, without having to spell it out, I think.
So that would be...
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
I'm sorry.
Through the Chair, yes?
Yes.
Got your comment?
Through the Chair. I, you know, as long as we, the selection committee has that in mind, because it isn't listed in one of those criteria that has points. But if the selection committee will be considering that, then that's fine with me.
And we can certainly point that out when we're, you know, going through the whole process, right? We can make that comment, so you can make a note in the future. And then I believe, anyone else have any questions or comments in regards to that? So we'll move on to the next question or comment, and I believe Ms. Simon had one more.
Yeah, the other one is on the criteria number 8, on page 5. It's referencing CHIPS, New England CHIPS, or LEED S. And it says "or," and I would like it to say "and," because we don't know yet which of those rating systems that we're going to decide to choose. And I'd like a company that would be familiar with both of those rating systems.
Anybody else have any questions, or comments, or objection to that? Does anybody else have any, Dr. Conti, any other questions, anyone?
Nicole and I are both editing at the same time, so we're trying to decide who's editing.
Who's going to edit? Okay. So at this point, unless there are any other questions or comments on the RFS, we can take, someone can actually make a motion with the "and" change suggested, and then we can go ahead and vote on it.
Through the Chair.
Do you have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the RFS as amended by the group.
Second, okay. Any additional discussion? All right, I'm going to go ahead and put it out for vote. Ms. Massardo?
Aye.
Ms. Monaco?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Dr. Conti?
Yes.
Ms., Dr. Chen?
Yes.
The Chair is an aye, so it's 7, 0, 0. All right. And then the next item is the OPM selection process, and either Nicole or Dr. Conti, if you would like to go ahead and walk some of us through, who haven't been through it before. I know you've been through it many times. This is only my second time through it, so...
Again, Nicole has outlined some dates. There's going to be a deadline. I believe there's also a walk-through of the building, so any firm that is interested will look at the project. They will submit proposals with, based on the criteria that you've just approved. And what has typically happened is it would be a subset of this group that would be the selection team, that would look at the proposals, follow the criteria, score all of the proposals based on the criteria that you've just approved. And then we would select, say, the top 2, 3, depending on how many we have, 4 possibly, and they would come in and do presentations. Again, you're all welcome to participate. I think we asked Nicole for how many copies, as many copies for proposals as we need. It just wouldn't be typical with a group this size to have everyone on the screening process. So if this is something you're really passionate about, then let us know. And again, I'm assuming that we would have, I'm hoping we would have a large number of proposals, and then we would go through the screening process, score them, and we would pick the top, Nicole...
We'd usually shortlist 3.
And then those 3 would come in, we'd schedule a time, and again, everyone here could observe the 3, and we could certainly have a conversation about that. So is there anything else, Nicole, you wanted to add to that?
No, and if anyone just is more curious about additional details, starting on page 5, the selection process and selection schedule process is outlined in more detail there.
Okay, and any other, anything you want to add to that, Nicole, at all, in terms of the process for this?
No, but are we going to be forming a selection committee this evening?
So, yeah, so what I'm going to do is, anyone who's interested in being a part of the selection process, if you could please email me, and then we'll, at the next meeting, we can go ahead and approve that group.
Okay.
Okay?
Are you complaining on getting this in the register, you said, on Wednesday?
So it'll be published for September 27th, so we'd have to have that committee, the selection committee...
Oh, we'd have to have the committee by then?
Approved and established before October 16th.
Okay, yeah. So we can probably get a meeting together before, I think, before October 16th, you can't?
No, again...
You're busy.
Well, I certainly would show up. I'm just wondering if, again, the selection process is just, you're just reading a lot of proposals and you're scoring them. If someone is really interested in doing that, we can, again, have as many people, or honestly, as few people as we would like. So my suggestion, Madam Chair, is maybe just ask for sort of a round of hands, and if we have 7 to 10 people, or 5 people, we just form the committee tonight, and we get moving.
That's fine with me. And Ms. Simon?
That's fine.
Okay. Jeremy?
I'd like to be on.
Okay, so, well, I'll...
I thought we were just starting that.
Yeah. Yes, Mr. Campbell?
Can you just explain what time commitment this might look like?
Pardon me?
The time commitment?
Oh.
Chris, again, if we get 10 proposals, then you're reading 10 proposals and scoring 10 proposals. If we get 3, then you're scoring 3. And then typically, we give the presenters 30 minutes, is what we've given them on an evening. So you would come out and do, listen to 3 30-minute presentations, and then we'd probably have a conversation with the committee here, where the selection committee would make a recommendation to the full committee. So I think something like that would be there. So I'm trying to think, on the Fox Hill, I probably spent 3 or 4 hours going through the, going through the proposals. A lot of it is marketing stuff, and you can get right to the substance. And Nicole, the costs are separate from that, correct? Is that how this works?
Yeah, after we're done with the reviewing, and then the shortlisting and interviews, once we've decided on like who the front leader is, then we negotiate a fee. So that's entirely separate. But I did just want to add that anyone that is going to be participating on the selection committee, that 3, 4 hours that Dr. Conti mentioned, to review the proposals, would be the week of October 16th. And then the interviews, we have scheduled for November 2nd.
Right, yeah, I saw that. Yeah, thank you for bringing those dates up. I think they're important. Did everyone hear the dates on that, that you'd be reviewing? So it'd be the week of October 16th, and then November 2nd, correct, would be the second date that's of importance?
Yes.
For attending? Okay. So based on that information, I'm just going to go around kind of the room, and if you could just hold your hand up and identify, in this room, and then I'll get the online people who are interested. I know Mr. Brooks is, Ms. Simon is, all right, Ms. Monaco is, anyone else in this room? Okay. Hold on one second. I got to find their name on my list here.
You are.
Okay. We've got...
Yes, thank you.
Okay, and Doug? And who's the other one? Chris?
Chris, Doug.
All right. Doug and Chris, right?
And also I see Bob Kuna.
Oh, Bob! He doesn't want to be a part of this. He didn't, and not at all.
We twisted your arm.
Okay, so I did ever get everyone in this room that's interested? So that's one, two, three, four, five, six so far, and I would be seventh. And then online folks, who else would be interested? If I can see a hand... Okay, we've got... Mimi? Melissa? Of course. And anyone else? Did we get everyone? Yep, so I have Mimi, Melissa, Joe, Mark for the online folks. Did I miss anyone? Okay. Did you write them down, too? Make sure I didn't miss anybody. Okay, so we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 people. Is that correct? Did I miss anyone? Okay.
I counted 11.
Okay.
Does that include Dr. Conti?
No, I'm okay.
All right. So... I guess that's a good group.
It's a great group. It's a good number. And again, I think... I'm hoping this will be an attractive job for firms. And we'll see by how many... I hope you'll be busy because I hope we get a lot of different proposals is what we're hoping for. There are some big projects around, but they're all different phases. So we'll see who feels they have the capacity to take on this feasibility study. So I think that's it. Does anyone have any questions about what a feasibility study is? Again, it's not... It doesn't involve any building. It's really going to be looking at our current conditions of the building very carefully, looking at our current enrollment, trying to project future enrollment, looking at the site, and then talking about how they would transition this building to potentially a new building, a renovated building, parts of this building. And they're going to put together some different proposals and then eventually work with Designer Bob to give us some sort of cost estimates for the vision that we all have moving forward. So it's a... If you think that none of this work is going to create a new building, but it'll define various pathways for us to get there. And that, you know, it could be okay if we bulldoze this whole place and move all the kids. We can have something in three years. Or they might say, "We're going to give you a 15- to 20-year path." So I think we have to ask them as they go along to create different options for us to look at. But it would give us a whole picture, and I think that's what's been missing because we all know we need HVAC, or we need an elevator, or we need this, or we need that. And this would have... This would be a really holistic look at this whole project. And it's a big building, and it was designed for 2,000 students. We have many other organizations and groups here in the building. So the building is full, but we're under 1,000 students now at the high school. So if they're just looking at designing a high school, the footprint may be a little bit different. So there's... I'm just excited to look at the different options that we could possibly use on this site. So this is the first step in that. And this does take time, and so I want to thank you all for... The pay is great. It's... We could double it for you. It's easy, so I, again, really do appreciate your time. And Chris, I think that's a good reminder to me that as we go through this, we should probably estimate the times in our agendas and be mindful that people have full-time jobs and they are volunteering their time. So we'll try to do that, especially as we get into budget season and other things. So I think we'll try to make these meetings as efficient as we can. And I think that's a good goal for us. So thank you for that. Bob, is there anything else? You've done this a lot, too.
No, again... Thank you. I think you described it perfectly. People probably do confuse the fact that the OPM is not the designer. Some people have dual roles, or some firms have dual roles. The person or team that we're looking for is to work for us and help us facilitate what a design may be. And as Dr. Conti mentioned, there could be anything from code upgrades to addition renovation or even a new building. So once we see what that pathway looks like, that timeframe and that budget, then we can look to bring on a designer to help us put a picture together of what that would look like. So right now, it's the concept, and then the designer would help us actually bring that to life. So long process, but I think that we have a good team in front of us. And I think that we can do a good job and figure out what the next steps are for the high school.
Thank you, Mr. Kuna. Thank you, Dr. Conti. And I think you're done? Okay. Anyone else have any other questions at this point? Anyone online? Nobody in the room? All right. So I'm going to ask if anyone would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. So moved? I don't think there's any discussion. I'm going to take a quick roll call. Ms. Massardo?
Aye.
Ms. Monica? Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Dr. Conti?
Yes.
Dr. Chen? Chair is an aye, seven, zero, zero. This meeting's adjourned.